You are watching Access to Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the November 10th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council, doing a workshop on annexation. Find more information for this meeting by going to www dot access to Port County dot org.
All right, good evening, everybody. Today is November 10th. And this is a workshop in reference to ordinance number forty-six thirty-seven. Our attorney will be a little late, Mr. Riggs. He did not get the updated time I'm sent, so he is en route. Who is going to be handling this? But we're going to go ahead and get started anyway, because I think what we want to do here specifically is this was the ordinance that was presented back in August and passed in September, it was vetoed and then overwritten. And there are several questions that have come up and been presented. Just FYI, when we first presented this ordinance, I had our attorney reach out to the state, to Rakita's office prior to the second reading. So we did that upfront, so we are still awaiting information back. But I asked that our attorney go ahead and submit some information to the office back in August, so that all of the council members know that. Because I know there's a process for that. So I've had several conversations and calls that have come come to me in reference to what they can or cannot do. And first, I want to just talk a little bit about the intent of the of the ordinance and not what it what it is, what everybody's asking about. But the intent of the ordinance was never to take take residents from different cities and towns that are established or anything like that. But it is a forward-thinking ordinance in the sense of we, Michigan City, has to come up with its own growth plan and strategy for itself, right? And then to do that, you have to protect your borders. But this ordinance in no way prohibits development from outside of our city proper. It doesn't do that. It doesn't do that. But what it does, it does create a process to make sure that we do have things in place into the future. And he's going to log into Zoom, so good. So with that being said, what I wanted to do, and we may have another attorney join online here eventually. I've talked to Hassan Associates, I've talked to Mr. Attorney Chris Willoughby, I've had a conversation with Mr. Riordan. I've talked to different people about the intent. I've talked to some folks in Michigan Shores. Who else? Trail Creek. Yes, right? So there have been a lot of questions that have come come forward because of the ordinance. And and I just want to make sure that we clear the air. And we are preparing to put forth some amendments to clean the language up, to make sure everybody understands exactly what it means. So that there's no gray area for some of those developments. So what I would like to offer the opportunity is for questions that may be had, but I see that we have our city planner here. And we also have Mr. Clarence Hoss. I don't know if you have any comments or anything before we get started with questions from the public, because this is really going to be a dialogue with the public that has a a public interest in this ordinance and then our attorney, so that as we create this next set of amendments, that we take all that into consideration.
I have a question for the planner, if that would be okay.
Go ahead. Skylar, you're Director of Planning, sir.
Okay, I was just wondering if anyone has checked our comprehensive plan for what the annexation guidelines are there, because that's one thing I just thought of right now. That, you know, what was our big plan for annexation, because we need to go along with what we had accepted when we accepted the comprehensive plan.
So we did do it, and we did add it in our comprehensive plan. We had kind of a historic where we've come from annexation and the things we have annexed over the years. And then we kind of looked at where do we want to annex, you know, and they're your typical. I mean, you can't go north, right? We have to go south. So your typical areas are identified in there. Let's just, in general, four twenty-one, Franklin Street, four twenty-one, South, thirty-five, Southeast. Those are going to be like, right, they're their main drags in the town. Your main streets and they're the interstate, they're the interstate exits. So it makes sense, right? They are identified in there, but in that comprehensive plan, we actually said that we need to come up with an annexation plan. It identifies the need for that plan, which is kind of, I think that was the intent of of the ordinance. I believe that was the intent of your ordinance, was to help us identify where do we need to grow, how do we grow comprehensively? I don't, I don't know that it was to necessarily say no to development, but just just helping us determine where we're going to grow and how we're going to grow. And the way that we do that is through the annexation waivers. We can, we can grow. We would need to have, we'd need to know what's out there that's already been. If there's annexation waivers that exist, they would help us grow or help us determine where we want to go. But also in the in the future, having an annexation plan would also identify, okay, if you do want to and what do we want to annex? We know that we we need to identify the land we want to annex over probably a ten-year period, ten to twenty-year period. Because every year, right now, we're one-offing fiscal plans, right? So every time someone wants to annex, they come up with a fiscal plan and we pay for it. The city pays for it. It would be better to set aside to know, maybe we don't want to annex that piece of land. It's not ready yet. Maybe there's not utilities near it, things of that nature. That's the other thing we want to look at is proximity of utilities. Where are utilities at? Where are they going to be expanded to? You know, all that's taken into consideration. I couldn't consider it like smart annexation rather than annexing large chunks of land that are going to chart, that are going to cost you millions and millions of dollars. Better to look at, how do we incrementally annex with respect to where our pipe and pavement are already or are going to be? Does that help out? So so right now, I've created a document, sorry, so I've created a document that would help us kind of prioritize that. I haven't put it forth yet, because we've been trying to clean this up. But it would help us try to prioritize where we're going to grow, how we're going to grow, where does, where does it make sense to identify those pieces of land we do want to bring into the city? And it would also help us plan for fiscal plans. Right now, we're going to Mr. or Ms. Hofmeister, Ms. Hofmeister and yourselves, bringing you nineteen thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars for fiscal plans. Wouldn't it be better just to set aside maybe money every year to for annexations? So that's kind of the idea of it all.
So let me add, so before we move forward, do you have a list of all the the properties that were going to be expiring that supposedly had agreements or anything like that?
I do not. No, 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 and I don't know that we've ever, I don't know that this has ever been kind of.
Jim alluded to attorney, alluded to in a meeting that properties were coming up for expiration or had expired, but we've never seen anything.
I've never seen them. It would also be nice to see them like, because they're going to be associated with a parcel ID. It'd be nice to throw them on a map, and so that would give us an idea of, okay, where we have thirty over here, but we only have two over here. Well, maybe that's the area you focus on, if that makes sense.
Any, any other questions for, yes?
Oh, Skylar sent you up. I got a question with pertaining to this thing about you don't have the documents, who has the documents? Or who should have the documents instead of doing this extensive research on all these supposed partials?
Great, great, good question. So I think the sanitary district would have those documents now. But in the future, I think as as we expand our utilities services, that would be better to and and this is something we need to talk to our attorney. Can we record those so that they're fundable? Because you mean, say, say something, say someone buys that property in the future. I think they would want to know if they've signed an annexation waiver, because and we would want to know too. So it would need to be fundable, you know, easily fundable. So the Recorder's Office probably makes sense. I would say the second piece of that is to make sure it gets to the GIS department and gets thrown onto a map so that we can, because every year we should be updating. The annexation document should be a living document, should be updated. Because, you know, every five to ten years, we would need to update. Plus, these annexation waivers are only good for a certain period of time. So and I would say Clerk's Office needs, so list Clerk's Office, Recorder's Office, GIS Department definitely, Planning Department, you know, more like a notification when you guys pass an ordinance. Who all, you know, everyone gets kind of that notification, here's your new ordinance. That's kind of how I would would see it. We probably need to memorialize that into 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 the amendments.
Into the document we're working right now.
Yeah, it was one of our suggestions to add in there.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ziegus.
This is just a kind of a wild shot, but couldn't that information be really useful? It was on Beacon.
It would be.
I mean, how do you add something like that on it? Like, everyone would know if you've signed one, when does it expire, et cetera?
I mean, it could potentially, I'm not totally sure what all can be added into the record cards. I'm not as familiar with that piece of it, but we have had success in the near, and just recently with putting the enterprise zone on there, we put our historic districts on there. It's just a matter of now that we have Tony Basil in the sanitary district, who is a GIS specialist. He can create the layer, it can go in there, because it's a GIS-based database, so.
Yes, thank you. Have you requested a list from the sanitary district?
I have not yet.
Can you do that?
I can do that. I will, I can do that. I was trying to get this thing cleaned up a little bit before we decided that.
All right, thank you.
But the next piece would be to you know, once we get this this updated and you, if you guys so choose to approve it, I think the next piece would be to kind of put together a a way to prioritize your annexations, so that you're not just choosing something that doesn't make sense, because there's, maybe it costs you millions of dollars to get utilities there when we could annex this other piece of land and there's utilities right next to it. So that's kind of the idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Um, no, but but just stay down this way, because people are going to ask questions. And Tramell, Attorney Rags will be here soon. He's in his car right now, driving and listening. But I do want to offer up, if there are any questions, I know that me and you Matt have had a conversation and want to make sure you, we talk through those, especially as we're making amendments to this ordinance.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, Matt Riordan, La Porte County Redevelopment Commission. So a couple, a couple of observations after kind of going through some practical projects related to it. So the, the, I'm going to start with the finance side. So the finance side's kind of spelled out in Indiana code thirty-six, seven, three point five. And it says, if this municipality is going to annex parcels, that there's financial obligation to, then the, any monies generated by that go to pay the debt off for the utilities that were paid for. So like in the instance of, so you're going to do an annexation plan at four twenty-one to ninety-four, just because it's active and there's a bond. So all that, anything generated would go to pay the debt off. So if there was an increase as it relates to another, you know, the municipal portion of the tax rate that would get collected and used to pay the debt off faster, and then it gets released, then it goes part of the city. So that, you know, was kind of one of the areas of concern that was brought up. Like, we have some outstanding obligations and other obligations that the county would like to do.
So like if you do a bond in the TIF and and there's still money that's owed on it, you'd like the debt paid off.
Exactly. So well, you know, that's part of the statute. So I don't think the county or you guys could can undo it unless the General Assembly would. So I wouldn't imagine that would change anytime soon. So I think the financial piece is covered there. And so I just want to talk about the the three, the the three live projects, and they're all different. And the president and I had talked about them. One of them is the municipality within your municipality. And the way it's, the ordinance reads today, it says you got to be de-annexed and then you get annexed. And so that probably wouldn't work for the developer and and the town folk. They didn't, they did not like that approach and stopped the project. And so and Mr. Willoughby knows well about this. He's the attorney for for Trail Creek. And so if, you know, the commissioner, the 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 city council decides to to tweak your ordinance, I would suggest that, you know, if it's, you know, if the costs are incurred by another, then, you know, the, it would be who the the districts to get more users, especially when you're pretty close or adjacent to it. I mean, you already served Trail Creek. This, in this particular instance, you don't, it's vacant parcel. So the developer is going to come in, Trail Creek would participate financially, the developer would, to do ninety homes. So that was like twenty million-ish dollars.
But it's in Trail Creek.
In the, yeah, so when the ordinance came out, like, I was talking to Chris Willoughby, I'm like, well, we're gonna, we're on hold here for a minute, unless some things change with Michigan City, or Bruce would want to be, because he's the sole property owner, de-annexed and then brought in. And then, and then what would, Trail Creek would then no longer have any involvement in setting up this residential TIF and all the work they put into the planning and doing everything would be for not. So they did not have interest in doing that. So that was like one instance. And one opportunity, I think, to tweak the ordinance. The second one is a parcel that is not yet served by utilities that were previously extended. And it's, it's close by, but it's not there. So based on the ordinance says if you're going to connect in or you're gonna operate, you'd have to be annexed, which wouldn't really, I guess, in this instance, not be that much of a hardship, with the exception that the request for the project, which is thirty million, was that the county participate in extending the utilities, your utilities to the site, so that they could be used for this site. And the utilities were sized and scoped in in a in a fashion, so that it could continue going to the east. So you get more development and on vacant land. So if there would be a tweak to that, that said utilities adjacent or adjacent to, that might be helpful to to for this particular development to happen. And again, based on the statute, if the county does some kind, does debt to do extend the utilities, whether the the landowners or the the municipality proceeded with an annexation strategy, that wouldn't have an impact on on the debt, i.e. property tax dollars. It would stay the same until it was retired. So I'm sure you guys all understand the math, you know, the only difference between being outside of the city on four hundred, on the south side at four hundred, and then being on the other side is the municipal portion of the tax rate. Because it's the same township, it's the same school board, library, et cetera. So but that money would get collected and go to pay the debt anyway. And then last but not least was the thirty-five ninety-four extension. So again, all these are instances where you have either the county or the county in partnership with a private entity that would enter into a debt instrument for the extension of your utilities for the project. So irrespective of the short or long-term annexation plans or strategies, or those that you might might start with, the financial portion would be taken care of here. So, you know, again, from our, just from the general development perspective and what I you know, brought up at the last meeting is, you know, we want to be cooperative with the city of Michigan City. These projects won't happen without Michigan City Water and Sewer, period. And to be able to come together and have a strategy and a timeline for answers and so on, to be able to do this would be the, what we'd be looking for with this.
So one of the things that we talked about, and you all may have a few questions, and then hopefully Tramell can answer a few. One of the comments was with, let's say, the vacant land that we're trying to develop. And you have a TIF. We sign the the waiver. But now it's parceled off to other individuals or other entities that want to participate. Or that could happen.
I, I, I assume if there's a sale of real estate, if it's not with the deed, I mean, why would you know or how would you know? And then, you know, eight years later, you're like, hey, congratulations, you're part of the city of Michigan City. Not that that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, you know, I don't, frankly, I don't know without. I wouldn't know, that's, that's a legal question.
Well, that's part of the the amendment is, you know, the recording, number one, of of all this is important. But then, number two, the notifications that to the existing, whoever signs the waiver, and making sure that they understand that whoever else that comes along, they got to sign a waiver as well. So I think that's going to be, how do we track that and monitor that? And I think that's going to be up to the process and the attorneys to make sure that that is highly documented on what that looks like. Because place, everybody, there's
Could be a lot of them.
They're doing it all over the state. I mean, it's not like it's
This isn't anything new, right?
So.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I think those would solve any of the county issues is just clarification of how the finance works.
Okay.
And just friendly participation with utilities and with the acknowledgement that the county would design the systems in partnership with both water and sanitary to the size and scope requested, that if and when the city decided, let's say Skylar and and the group comes together and you guys have gotten to where you have an annexation strategy or plan. At the time, there's a project, you say to the county, hey, we want to make sure that the water is sized to X and the sanitary is sized to Y, so that we can accommodate that, especially if the county is paying for it. I think you want to capitalize on that as a, the county and or a developer. You want to capitalize on that opportunity as you're moving towards a annexation strategy or plan.
And and before I let you, before Councilwoman Ziegus, the other thing, just going back to the first one. So that was never the intent. You know, we had that conversation about Trail Creek and and then I had one couple of parcels and another town, another town that's within the town or adjacent. It's never the intent to take residents or property out of a municipality that's already existing. That was never the intent. And it's, it reads that way, though. It does read that way.
It's just on the paper, so it's like
Read that way. So we are going to have an amendment for that.
Right. And then, yeah, I mean, I think once that's satisfied or you're taking care of or considered, I don't, I don't see that. You know, the city planning on future growth and investment being an impediment to development, it shouldn't be. And there should be a partnership, and I don't think the county's ever had any challenges with partnering with the city of Michigan City on on doing this stuff. So I don't, I don't see that as a strategy. I think as the city continues to move forward and and wants to do annexation plans or strategy, you know, that approach would have to go to, you know, the County Plan Commission to talk about, these are our annexation plans. And, you know, you can put, you know, you have the zoning and plating as it is today, and then you have ghost plating that goes over the top of it, that says FYI, this is an area of, you know, potential annexation for the city of Michigan City. They've done through an annexation plan that hasn't been activated as of yet. So that people who own property can agree or not agree at the time or whatever. The, you know, again, the city would have to go through its process and contact landowners and get concurrence or not. I mean, that's an arduous task to get done. But I also agree that having a sound fiscal plan that relates back to revenue and cost is associated with the annexation is key. Well, I personally think you can, you can add to the city's coffers by stealthfully extending these utilities to other areas where you have more users at a higher rate. You know, it's a, it's a math equation at that point. The water pipe costs this much, we get this much in fees, this is what it looks like, so.
Councilwoman Ziegus?
Yes, I have a question, and you know, without maybe getting into a very long thing. You said that the municipal tax income we would get from land, whether it's annexed or not, is not that different. But what about lit tax? What if we build something that has a lot of employees? Isn't that going to make a difference for us if it's part of the city or not?
Does all the lit tax go to the county and then it's distributed based on population? I don't know that it's actually where it's at, right?
No, the it, let and it are two different things. So what are we talking about? Lit tax? Okay, well, I don't, I don't think that at this point, we should be considering that in in the picture or looking at that. We need to look at what is the opportunities here on any annexation and what the costs are. And the cooperative effort, or not the cooperative effort on working with the county, because I have some major questions about and I don't want to get into it right now. I want to save this particular question for the end of the meeting for Mr. Riordan. And but I don't think that you could really put that into the equation on.
But I, but but for for future planning, I think if if there's a large facility, we would, that money does come in to play. Yeah, all right. I'll make sure to
You can find that out, but I assume county gets all the lit, they distribute it based on population, you know, where it's generated, so it's not real super specific. Otherwise, there'd be cities and towns and other places that got a lot of lit money and other places that didn't get any lit money. And you'd have a very large disparity in the in the distribution for me, so.
Mr. Rodriguez is edging toward.
Go ahead.
Didn't want to, no, Mr. Riordan has done a, between Mr. Riordan and your your city planner have really nailed it down for you. But with regard to, here, we're back to that question, this but-for question. Without the participation in in this collaborative effort, we don't have in the one, just one project alone, I know it's approximately a hundred and twenty-five new permanent full-time jobs with higher than county average wages. That would have an immediate demonstrative impact to that lit tax, which again is going to the, that jurisdiction. And if ultimately it winds up being part of Michigan City, that then becomes your but I believe to to get a definitive answer, and we should have a definitive answer. I will check with the county auditor and respond back to you as to what that split would be, because I believe it is a split.
So, all right, thank you. Any, any additional questions or comments from from anyone? I want Mr. Rags to be able to make a comment. Tramell, I don't know if you can if you can hear us or or not, or if you heard everything.
I can. I'm actually right outside of building and walking in right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Tillman, do you have any questions? Because I do want Attorney Rags to address the clarification on a city or town that is adjacent that already if if they are trying to get city sewer and water, what the ordinance says and what needs to be changed. So I will wait till you come inside and so you can address that. And any additional comments from any of the council members? You said you had one more thing, Councilman Paul?
Yeah, on the, for Mr. Riordan, for at the last council meeting, you talked about the water line and such out by the new hospital. And it was my interpretation that the city paid for the majority of, or all of that through a bond issue to do Ohio Street, extend sewer, extend water out there. Now, was I misinformed on that?
I think it relates to anything on the city side. At four hundred, yeah, there was a big project there, but the the county got a grant. I can't remember how how long ago that one was, but to do like a million something there. And then we just, the the county bond for four twenty-one and ninety-four was five point one million to take it where it was left off, I think like nine fifty, and then go under and then up and through. So it's like a collaborative deal. I know that we tried to work to get, I think that we got some, there was some participation when four hundred was going on. I remember that was like a city-county split for that deal. And then we got a grant to run it further. But then, yeah, the county just issued a bond to run water and sewer that continues on. Uh, but then, yeah, the county just issued a bond to run water and sewer that continues on, serves the whole thing. Um, Holiday Properties did their own bond and they brought all that infrastructure south into that subdivision where, what is it? Um, Indiana Health or who's your health? Yeah, that was, uh, Holiday Property. So when, uh, the Port County Redevelopment Commission. Did, um, the next project, we refinanced that bond, that got paid off. And so we took care of that and now we're doing the rest. So it was Holiday with TIF in that area that extended it to mine now.
But you just said that the redevelopment commission paid that bond off, somehow you own it, until that's paid off.
Yeah, we took care of that. We reimbursed them, so that's done. And the, the city still owns all the utilities in the road. Holiday never owned it. It was always, it was always structured so that any public improvements that were made were owned municipally and not by the private sector. So once Holiday ran their, their utility water and sewer and they stopped till they got to the edge of their development. Um, and we picked it up and then ran it underneath the highway with the rest of it. So it was like, I think we had like a million eight. Outstanding to Holiday and then the balance of the five went to the additional, uh, utility improvements.
Oh, okay. So you're saying that the city put that in or, cuz.
County did.
Right, they paid for it.
County did, county paid for it. Uh, county TIF reimbursed Holiday for the first part, county bond. Uh, now paying for the rest of it to extend it south under the highway and, and down four twenty-one.
So by doing that bond issue on that, on that, uh, extension, is, uh, state law. Says that you own that till it's paid off and then it reverts back to the, uh, utility? Am I misinformed on that?
We've, uh, stipulated from the beginning that any public improvements made as part of the project are owned by the municipality. They're owned by you. So even though there's a county water and sewer district in that area and it's technically their territory, there was an agreement between the county sewer district. Um, and the city to say, the county sewer district has a lease underneath the ground. And then the improvements themselves are owned and operated by the, the water sewer department. So they're yours to keep.
Not to keep, to maintain.
Well, they're, they're yours, they charge people to use them.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Right. So, but, but again, but that's the part where we need all the parcels and all the information and the dates because. I believe somebody's asked for those before and, and I don't think anybody's received them. So that's, that's important. But Mr. Our, our attorney is here. So one of the questions, one of the comments was really about, um, what. For the amendment is for clarification, um, around the whole de-annexation, annexation. And because, you know, like I shared in my emails, that was never my intent, that we will be impacting or affecting. Existing municipal, um, governments.
Correct, and, and, and sometimes.
Turn your mic on. Is it on?
It's on now.
Okay.
Uh, sometimes with, with any legislation and, and whether it's city council, uh, all the way, state government, Congress, whatever. Uh, sometimes there are some unintended consequences based on the way language is written. And that was simply an unintended consequence. I do understand and I understand it was said in the meeting earlier, based on the way it reads, it does seem as if somebody in, in incorporated area. Would have to de-incorporate and then reincorporate, which was not the intent. So we can go ahead and definitely edit that language. Uh, and that should not be an issue because again, that wasn't the intent of the council.
And, and then the only other thing, um, is really to kind of spell out what happens with these annexation agreements. I think, um, if there is, you know, when there's a waiver, who is notified, who, where it's recorded. Cuz right now what happens, we, none of us know where anything is. It's just like the sanitary district has it. We've never seen it. The planning office doesn't have any information like when, um, there's water extended. Or sewer extensions or whatever and their waivers, nobody seems to know where anything is.
When there's a, when there's a waiver like that, that restricts the rights of a property owner to do certain things with their property, that needs to become a land covenant. Um, so what has to happen is it needs to be recorded with the county reporter. Uh, so that any person who would come to purchase that property, any subsequent owner or anything like that, would have noticed, there would be notice in the public record. Uh, for all persons. It's no different than if you were subject to a homeowners association or something like that, something that would run with your land. Even after you dispose of the land, uh, that covenant still exists, whether or not you are the owner, you the contractor party who originally entered into it. Uh, were still around. So that's what would have to happen. It would, it would need to be recorded, uh, to fulfill the public notice requirement. And that's a place that it could always be.
Can we add, we need to, well, I would like to make sure that we add some language like that in the ordinance that, that ensures that the sanitary district does that. And water.
Thank you.
Alright.
Well, that's the problem right now. And then you're also gonna have to put language in there, I might suggest. That we need to have money allocated to do a search on the properties in, in question. Or the territory in question because, um. Mr. Terrell is correct on that. I was thinking about that, that it should be recorded. Because it is an active covenant on that property, just like if I get a, uh, waiver by the plan commission to, uh. Put something on my property outside of the zoning ordinance, that has to be recorded with my property. Cuz it goes on for, uh, forever with that property, once that's approved. Just like the covenant.
Any additional comments for Tramell? I know we have a meeting starting at five fifteen, um, ARPA meeting. Any, any, uh, questions from? Matt, Tony, anybody? Alright. And I know Mr. Willoughby will be out of the, um, office, but he pretty much had the same comments that you had. So I think we're covered. He, he did text me, so. With that being said, um, thank you all for coming and, and, and making this trek here. And, and let me say to our attorney, my apologies that y'all didn't receive the, the change in the notification for the meeting at four thirty, so.
That's fine, we're ready to participate via Zoom. At least I was able to listen in. Um, so, you know, we understand sometimes like that.
Alright, thank you. With that being said, I'll adjourn unless there are any additional questions. Alright, thank you, everybody.